Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting to order. The Village of Deerfield Board of Trustees Meeting, May 6, 2024. Roll call, please.
Mayor Shapiro.
Here.
Trustee Benton.
Here.
Trustee Berg.
Here.
Trustee Goldstone.
Here.
Trustee Jacoby.
Here.
Trustee Metzchilders.
Here.
And Trustee Oppenheim.
Here.
We have a quorum.
If we can all rise.
(Inaudible). 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 (Inaudible).
We have a number of items, proclamations, and appointments on our agenda. There's going to be a slight change. I'd like to make the proclamation or introduce the proclamation of National Police Week for May 12th and 18th, and with that I will read the proclamation. Whereas in 1962, President John Kennedy proclaimed May 15th as National Peace Officers' Memorial Day, the calendar week in which May 15th falls as National Police Week, and whereas the members of the law enforcement agency of the Village of Deerfield play an important role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of our residents in our community, and whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices of their law enforcement agency, and recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence and disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression. And whereas thus far in 2024, 55 law enforcement officers in the United States have made the ultimate sacrifice and have been killed in the line of duty, and whereas the Village of Deerfield recognizes and thanks the personnel of the Deerfield Police Department during Police Week. Now therefore, I, Daniel C. Shapiro, the mayor of the Village of Deerfield, do hereby proclaim May 12 through May 18, 2024, as National Police Week in the Village of Deerfield, and urge each resident to extend appreciation of the Deerfield Police Department and all law enforcement for the vital services they perform and their exemplary dedication to our community. Proclaim the 6th day of May, 2024. Do I have a motion?
Move approval.
To a resolution.
Second.
And proclamation. Roll call.
Trustee Benton.
Yes.
Trustee Berg.
Yes.
Trustee Goldstone.
Yes.
Trustee Jacoby.
Yes.
Trustee Metzchilders.
Yes.
And Trustee Oppenheim.
Yes.
Before I come down and present this to Chief Sliosis, the proclamation really does say so much in itself, but our agency, our police department, is just truly outstanding, and I think it's the envy of so many police departments, villages, towns, and cities in the North Shore and in Lake County. We are so grateful and honored to have the men and women of this department in this village serve us and protect us. They are awesome. They do their jobs without asking for any thanks, without seeking any glory or self-gratification. So I want to thank them and present this proclamation, but I also would urge you, when you see a police officer, firefighter, someone who's, excuse me, served in the armed forces, please thank them for their duty to our village and to our country.
We're going to clap in a second. (Laughter). (Applause).
If I could just take a couple of seconds here for some comments. First of all, thank you, Mayor and Board, for the continued, ongoing support that you give us on a regular basis. As the mayor said, this department wouldn't be what it is today without the support of you folks presently and your predecessors as well, and we greatly appreciate it, so I thank you for that. I'd also like to thank the men and women of the police department, some of those that have joined us here today. As the mayor said, over the last couple of years, it's gotten very difficult in many regards to be a police officer. In spite of some of those conflicts and difficulties, the men and women of this agency show up every day. They perform in a continued exemplary manner to serve and protect this community, and I greatly appreciate it. They make this department what it is. They keep us going each and every day, so I thank them, I thank you, and thank you for this recognition. Thank you.
And now, it gives me pleasure to administer the oath of office for a promotion to Trevor Salado.
Brian's got a brief presentation before we do.
Thank you, Mayor and Board. Special occasion here tonight for Trevor Salado being promoted to sergeant, but before I get started, I'm going to ask Trevor to come up and introduce his guests that are here. I'm not even going to try and attempt to do that. (Laughter). I have my wife, Sam, my kids, Everly, Maverick, and Banks, my mom, Jim and Sue, my best friend since we were little kids, Commander now, Mike Stevens, and Ron Wolflick's here somewhere in the back, and everyone else.
Nice.
Can you stay up here?
Sure.
Embarrass you a little bit, doesn't matter. Trevor began his employment with the Deerfield Police Department on January 5, 2015. During this time, he has been a patrol officer. Trevor has also served as a bike officer, juvenile officer, and an evidence technician. Trevor has attended numerous courses and received several certifications from Celebrite, Magnet Forensics, and Advanced Digital Forensics to investigate cellular, phone, and other digital crimes. Reads a lot easier than to say that. Trevor is also became a member of the Internet Crimes Against Children Task Force. Trevor was assigned to the Investigations Unit in July of 2018 and was later assigned to the Lake County Major Crimes Task Force in 2019, where he was able to use his skills and experience as a cell phone and computer forensics for agencies throughout the county. In 2021, Trevor completed a five-week course of study in the National Computer Forensics Institute in Alabama, sponsored by the United States Secret Service, and was awarded approximately $36,000 in computer equipment for the department. And correct me if I'm wrong, Trevor, I think you got a dog out of that, too? Saint Bernard? Yes, I did get a Saint Bernard. Out of that same trip. Trevor routinely participates in community service events like a charity hockey game, Coffee with a Cop, Special Olympics Torch Run, Lutheran General Toy Drive, and various town hall meetings and safety talks. We recognize and commend Trevor for his hard work and dedication to service to the village, the department, and the community, and congratulate him on the well-deserved promotion. Mayor, it's for you, please. I should have given you this so you can study. Oh. As long as they're both right. No, it's got my name.
(Inaudible).
Oh, geez. Man.
She wants daddy.
Oh, man.
I, Trevor Salado.
Hi, Trevor Salado.
Have been appointed to the Office of Police Sergeant.
Been appointed to the Office of Police Sergeant.
In the Village of Deerfield.
The Village of Deerfield.
In the counties of Lake and Crook.
Counties of Lake and Crook.
Everest. To solemnly swear.
To solemnly swear.
That I support the Constitution of the United States.
That I support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The ordinances of the Village of Deerfield.
The ordinances of the Village of Deerfield.
And the rules and regulations of the Deerfield Police Department.
Rules and regulations of the Deerfield Police Department.
I'm hurry, honey. (Laughter). And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the Office of Police Sergeant.
Office of Police Sergeant.
According to the Testament.
According to the Testament. Yeah. (Applause). By the way, I'm going to do my hair. Now, the traditional.
I can't wait.
(Inaudible).
Aw, yay. (Inaudible). He flinches well now.
Trevor, if you want to say anything? Just want to thank the Board, obviously the police department. They have given me a pretty long leash to disappear for weeks on end, and my family for picking up the slack when I'm not home. These trainings, it's five weeks of you living in Alabama, so it's never, weekends, everything. All my great mentors that are here that have helped me out getting places, people that are here that, my FTO in the beginning was my partner, and now he'll be my FTO as a sergeant, so it all comes full circle. That's it. Thanks, everybody. (Applause).
One more thing, Mayor. Trevor touched upon the induction of Ron Wolflick. He is now with the Attorney General's Office. He actually worked for our department as a cadet and police officer from '78 to '82, so it's good to see him back. Nice.
John, you're not going to act for a budget request right now, are you? I'm thinking I'd be in trouble.
That was great.
Moving on, I have next on the agenda a proclamation, Jewish American Heritage Month. Is there a motion to approve the proclamation? So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We have a proclamation recognizing Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. Is there a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. There are a couple of appointments that I'd like to make tonight with the Board's consent. The first appointment is Clayton Edwards to the Community Relations Commission. Is there a motion?
Move approval.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. The second appointment is Elizabeth Reitz to Family Days Commission. Is there a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And the third appointment is David Hornthal to the Sustainability Commission. Is there a motion?
Move approval.
Second. All in favor? Aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And the third appointment is David Hornthal to the Sustainability Commission. Is there a motion?
Move approval.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. The second appointment is Elizabeth Reitz to Family Days Commission. Is there a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And the third appointment is David Hornthal to the Sustainability Commission. Is there a motion?
Move approval.
Second. All in favor? Aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And the third appointment is David Hornthal to the Sustainability Commission. Is there a motion?
Move approval.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next thing on our agenda is the six-month report. Eric, six-month finance report, Eric.
Thank you. This is the Finance Department's six-month report. You do get to hear from me every month, so a lot of this is probably review, but it's also a good chance to see it all in one place. There's a lot of work that goes in from the department, so happy to report back what we've been doing here. Starting off with financial reporting, we just completed the fieldwork for our 2023 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. That's the external audit that's done by Baker Tilly. That report is now at partner review. They'll write the reports and be back in June to present that to the Board. Prelimarily, everything looks good, so we get to stay open for another year. Moving back a few more months, we completed the annual budget document, capital improvement plan, and revenue projections for 2024. We submitted those documents to the Government Finance Officers Association for their distinguished budget presentation award. We've gotten that award for several years in a row now and anticipate getting that again in 2024. We also prepared the 2023 Annual Levy Ordinance and came back and abated a portion of that levy for the amounts related to the qualified energy conservation bonds that we get back from the federal government. We filed those documents with the county clerks at Lake County and Cook County, and now we should all be receiving our property tax bills or already got them shortly. We also filed the annual compliance report for the grant money that we received from the American Rescue Plan Act. The first half of that we spent back in 2021. That was about 1.26 million. We spent that on the street rehab program. In 2023, we spent the other half of that on Walk Keegan Road Water Main project, so got that grant money in, put that to good use out in the community. We have begun working on the village's actuarial analysis of the police pension fund. That includes determination of the 2024 contribution that the village will make to the police pension fund. The village has done a great job in the past of making at least the full contribution. Sometimes we've done more, and that's caused our funding percentage to be very well funded in the police pension fund there. This go-around, the 2022 year was really tough from the investment side. We had not very good returns in that year. That happens from year to year. It's built into the formula, but that, along with some assumption changes in 2023 on our interest rate assumptions, will likely draw that balance lower. Not to the point that there's any concern, will still be very well funded, but it will be lower and in turn probably increase our contribution in 2024 to the police pension Moving on to debt management, we made all the debt service payments that were required to be made. That sounds pretty straightforward, but you never want to find out what happens if you don't make those payments. We also filed the paperwork to make sure that we continue to get those qualified energy bond rebates back. That's about 350-some thousand dollars that comes back to the village each year, so we always make sure we get that filed. There's no new debt anticipated in 2024, so nothing new for the rest of this year, but as we move into the 2025 budget, we'll evaluate with the Board and staff what needs to be done going forward on the debt issues. Risk management and human resources also falls under the Finance Department, and we've done quite a few things here this go-around. We implemented a guaranteed paid parental leave pilot program for all employees. We've currently recruiting for lateral police officers, a senior accountant, and a building division supervisor. We've actually hired some lateral police officers, a part-time telecommunicator, and a summer intern over at the treatment plant as well. We coordinated the Volunteer Engagement Commission meetings. We held six interviews and filled three vacant positions. Filed the annual ACA forms for the village and library staff, and distributed W-2s and 1099s for village, library, and the police pension fund. Finance also coordinates a wellness committee for the village, the library, and the park district. The three entities come together because we have a shared health insurance benefit that we take to the market and get a better rate by having more lives covered through that. The committee organized a flu shot and health screening event for covered employees and their dependents. It was held at the Patty Turner Center and funded through a wellness incentive through the Health Insurance Cooperative. The committee also organizes several lunch-and-learn seminars that are designed to bring awareness to certain topics, including cancer awareness, positive change, and social security benefits, so really focusing on keeping the employees informed on their health and financial wellness there as well. One new project that we're excited about is an agreement we just recently entered into with Invoice Cloud, which is a company that will provide electronic billing options for our utility billing customers. So it's going to provide additional ways for residents to pay their utility bill. It's also going to provide them better access to seeing their history online, and probably most importantly, we'll be able to send electronic bills instead of sending out the paper bills if people want to opt into that. So I'm excited about the efficiencies and the reduction of paper waste, I guess, there. Final item for the report tonight is just some ongoing tasks. We processed approximately 2,800 payable invoices. We generated 2,300 monthly utility bills, processed payroll for village, library, and the police pension, and processed approximately, well, just under 150 cash receipts each day. We have seven people in the department all working hard and all doing the best we can.
You do a great job. You mentioned the 2025 budget. Will department heads soon be meeting to get that process going?
Yeah, we usually start that process internally in July, so it's coming up. We'll have several internal meetings.
It seems like it never ends.
Yeah, yeah, right. Yeah, so we'll have several internal meetings with staff and village manager, department heads, and then again, plan to put the binders together to talk to the Board about those changes and priorities that we have for 2025.
Does anyone have any questions for Eric on the six-month review?
Looks great.
As usual, you do a great job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Minutes of the previous meeting, April 15, 2024. Do I have a motion to approve the Board of Trustee meeting minutes?
Move approval.
Second. Roll call, please.
Trustee Benton.
Yes.
Trustee Berg.
Yes.
Trustee Jacoby.
Yes.
Trustee Metzchilders.
Yes.
Trustee Goldstone.
Yes.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, you just got comfortable, now you got stand-up again.
Gave me time to change my notes over, just in time. This is the March 2024 Treasurers Report. It represents a quarter of the new year. Just a few highlights tonight, starting off with the net sales tax, which actually decreased from the prior month and the same period of the prior year. Doesn't sound good on the surface, but it's a little bit more due to the fact that those comparative months just had unusual activity driving those up, as opposed to last year and last month, as opposed to this year's being lower.
So this year's more in line with two years ago?
It's up from two years ago, but.
But down from last year.
But, yeah, down from last year. So more, nothing bad happened this month. It's more unusually high in the previous months, and you can see that, too, because the year-to-date amounts for the current year exceed the previous two years' amounts. So it's a long year. It happens from month to month. Somebody has a great month in the previous period, and then it looks like we're down, but we're, we'll watch it, but we're not too concerned at this point. Water and sewer usage, again, we're early in the year, so it's typically low this time of year. Interest income continues to outperform the budget. Rates have stayed higher than we thought last July when we started the budget process, so.
What were the interest rates last year at this time? Do you remember?
It was just starting to creep up. It was starting to creep up.
Yeah, I don't remember off the top of my head, but, yeah. They've stayed higher than.
Compared to .04 for five years before that, right, or whatever.
Right, so we'll take it while we can get it.
Yep.
Hotel tax reflects payments from all six hotels. Electric utility tax shows zero in the report. That's because we got it shortly after month-end, so we'll see it double up in April, so by the time April's through, we'll be right back in line there. We did start to receive some of the Cook County property taxes. That comes in in two waves, as those get paid by the businesses and residents, and building permits this month does include some fees for the Zion Woods project. Moving over to the expenditure side, notable expenditures in March include the construction and engineering costs for the various projects that are going on, improvements at 839 Todd Court, we got a public works trackless vehicle, and also a police explorer during the month. So all budgeted, all expected, but worthy of pointing out, I guess.
Second chance to ask Eric any questions.
Nothing.
Again.
Thank you.
Bills and payroll. Do I have a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Goldstone.
Yes.
Trustee Jacoby.
Yes.
Trustee Metzchilders.
Yes.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Yes.
Trustee Benton.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Now's the time in our agenda where we offer the public the opportunity to comment on non-agenda items. There have been four people so far that have signed up, and if there are others who want to speak and haven't signed up, they'll have an opportunity as well. So I'm just going to call the folks in the order in which they were signed up, and the first one is John Lyons. John, as you approach, I understand, will you be speaking on behalf of others?
There'll be others speaking as well.
Okay, but you're just speaking, okay.
Yeah, but I am, correct, Eric, speaking.
I just want to make sure that we understand, got it.
And thank you for the opportunity.
So we try to, we're not going to start the clock yet. I want to make sure you get your time. Public comments are limited to three minutes, to the extent that you can be true to that, that'd be great, and I think there's some pictures here that you've asked that the Board have, so we have those, and the floor's yours.
Okay, well, thank you for letting me.
Shift over into the mic so we can hear you.
Thank you for letting me bring this topic up before your May 20 meeting to give you a little time to perhaps do diligence, and thank you to Jeff Reichert, who called me in Cambodia to assure me that my submissions were being distributed appropriately. But my name is John Lyons. My wife and I have resided at 310 Forsythia Drive for 51 years. We raised four sons there, who, along with the other children, played throughout the year on what they call the Hill. This hill is the berm that's going to be under discussion. Pulte wants to tear it down. Our grandchildren, as well as other grandchildren, play on it. Neighbors walk on it, some with dogs. Animals and birds inhabit it, and occasionally even a deer appears in it. Today alone, I saw two people walking the dogs, as well as a young man with a young son on it. I'll summarize a few points tonight, but as we get closer to the date on which you trustees have to vote on the Planning Commission's recommendation that gives Pulte carte blanche on their proposed development at the sacrifice of our development, I hope you'll communicate if you want more of our view. First and most obvious is that the plans include destroying the berm at the end of Forsythia Drive, along with about 30 mature evergreen trees and deciduous trees, some of the latter of substantial size. Such demolition would destroy the wonderful character of our neighborhood. Such spots of nature are rapidly disappearing due to urban sprawl and disappearing forever. Next, the plans are very early on and can be changed, and Pulte has obvious engineering ability to do that. In that regard, why are 42 homes a necessity? The elimination of two or three homes from the plan would have, at best, a minuscule effect on the bottom line of this company whose net revenues in recent years was approaching $2 billion. They say that access to our sewage and water supply is essential. Both of those already exist through the berm on our street. Moreover, the ability of Pulte to arrange for substantial sewage and wet water supply, if more is needed, should be a simple matter. Surely, they have addressed such access numerous times as they developed other housing development projects. Finally, and there's more I could add, Pulte's comments that looking at the backs of houses, which they propose to be right at the property line of the streets, the houses at the end of the street, is surely better than viewing the Walgreens parking lot. The misleading statement about that ignores the fact that because of the berm and the trees on it, we don't see the Walgreens parking lot. Not only demolish it, not only demolishing it but replacing it with homes whose property line is contiguous with our property lines is a sacrifice of us to their development plans. My last comment is this: I am rather certain that the planning board members or anyone else, if anyone else lived on Forsythia Drive, they would not approve this kind of a project. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, John. Can you just maybe explain or walk us through these pictures that you want us to look at?
Sure. We put together these pictures. They show a comparison of what exists now in the berm with the proposed homes that are going to be built. If you look at the one that I think is Mark 315, you'll see in the corner the driveway of the existing home at 315. The proximity of the homes to that driveway is a miscarriage of planning with the community in mind. But if anyone needs copies of these, I think we didn't have quite enough copies, I surely can provide them by email or whatever.
Thank you.
That it. Thank you. Finally, and there's more I could add, Pulte's comments that looking at the backs of houses, which they propose to be right at the property line of the streets, the houses at the end of the street, is surely better than viewing the Walgreens parking lot. The misleading statement about that ignores the fact that because of the berm and the trees on it, we don't see the Walgreens parking lot. Not only demolish it, not only demolishing it, but replacing it with homes whose property line is contiguous with our property lines is a sacrifice of us to their development plans. My last comment is this, I am rather certain that the Planning Board members or anyone else, if anyone else lived on Forsythia Drive, they would not approve this kind of a project. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, John. Can you just maybe explain or walk us through these pictures that you want us to look at?
Sure. We put together these pictures, they show a comparison of what exists now in the berm with the proposed homes that are going to be built. If you look at the one that I think is Mark 315, you'll see in the corner the driveway of the existing home at 315. The proximity of the homes to that driveway is a miscarriage of planning with the community in mind. But if anyone needs copies of these, I think we didn't have quite enough copies, I surely can provide them by email or whatever.
Thank you.
That, thank you.
Next person on the list, is it Kay? Kay Lyons? I'm thinking you guys are probably related somehow.
My name is Kay Lyons, and thank you for letting me speak to you. I just have one comment, and that is from a practical standpoint. I don't understand why a multi-billion dollar company or builder needs to devalue my property to enhance his profit. Thank you.
Thank you. Tracy Merrill.
I am a resident of Deerfield, I live right across the street from the Lyons', and I'm here tonight with my husband, Tarek. I'm coming before you about the same topic on the Pulte development, and I know I've reached out to a few of you via phone and email, just wanted to share our very deep concerns about this project. And I don't know if the document camera would be available or not, just wanted to give you an idea of the site plan, if you haven't seen it yet already, and what that really looks like. I know you've been able to see the images of what you would see if you're standing at the end of our street, but this could also give you a general idea of what they're planning at the moment, so.
Tracy, or David, can you square that up a little bit? It's hard.
Oh, sorry about that.
Hey, can we restart her clock?
Yeah, let's start at three, let's go back to three.
Thank you.
Sure, of course. And while he's getting that squared away, Tracy?
Yeah.
We have received your emails and your letters, and I assure you, we've all seen them and read them, and we take them all very seriously.
Yeah, thank you, I appreciate that.
Yep.
And thank you for your time tonight, too. So Pulte plans to develop the Walgreens property into a 42-single-family home, planned unit development project. And at the heart of this is removing the berm that currently exists right here along here, this is what they call the South Berm. And my home is right here, this is 315, and then the Lyons' home is directly across the street, so you can see that there are three lots that would directly abut ours. And in order to accommodate those three lots, they want to completely destroy this berm. In addition to destroying the berm, Pulte has claimed that they need to access our storm sewer lines, which we believe and we know is completely untrue. We've actually, we've hired and commissioned a civil engineer of our own to look at the utility GIS maps, and he came out, looked at the site recently, and there is no need to have to access through the berm, cut through the land, destroy all of the trees, to access the utility lines that are at the end of our street. So I just want to reiterate the facts that we've presented to the Plan Commission, and that I'll also share with you. So the project would obviously compromise the privacy that we currently afford from the berm itself. It, you know, obviously is a very substantial berm, you can see from some of the images, we can send you some more pictures, but it's over six feet tall, it has 45-year-old trees that are extremely mature, so it provides not only privacy but noise reduction. Right along here, this is where 294 runs, so there is a sound wall, but the berm with very mature trees offers some noise reduction for us. It would also have a very significant negative impact on the local environment ecosystem, there's lots and lots of birds that call that berm its home and its habitat. I also did an appraisal of my home, I worked with an appraiser that looked at our property value as it is today with the berm in place, and then did a projection analysis of what that would be if there was no berm and if there was a home directly next to ours. It showed a reduction and depreciation of around $60,000 in our home value if you have a home directly up against our property line with very minimal landscape screening. So there is some monetary injury to our home as well, it's not just, you know, benefit and joy that we get from the berm itself. And the project would diminish the overall aesthetic appeal that we have in our neighborhood. When you go down our street, we're at the very end of the street, the neighbors, you know, that's the view that they see. Instead, you would replace that with homes and a walk-through that they're planning. There's a sidewalk that they're planning on extending through here as well, so it would increase foot traffic in front of our home, which is not something that we're in favor of. So I just want to be clear about what myself and our neighbors are asking, and that is that we ask that you require Pulte to preserve the berm and reconfigure their plans. One idea that we had, that we've been tossing around, this right here is a park that they have in the center of the neighborhood, could they perhaps put that park here and keep the berm? We feel that there are many, many options, that might be one of them, but we do think that they have the capability of reconfiguring their plans.
Hey, Tracy?
Mm-hmm.
You're a little bit past the three minutes, so if you have a lot more to go, I would just ask you to kind of bring it home.
No, I appreciate it, thank you. So I just ask you to imagine if you were in our shoes, would you be in favor of destroying the land that's there? And I urge you to stand up for the interests of the people who elected you, we expect you to protect our interests and our properties, and this issue is of paramount importance and cannot be ignored. So I appreciate your attention and your time tonight, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
No.
Really quick one. The reports that you mentioned, are those, will the Plan Commission have access to those, and will they be part of the materials that are submitted?
Yes, I'll submit the appraisal, and then we have yet to receive the information from the engineer.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Sure. Yeah, so the is, the Plan Commission is making the recommendations, they will be, if they're submitted, presented here at the Village Board level. But unless this Village Board were to send it back to the Plan Commission, it would not go before the Plan Commission after they issued their findings.
The reports, that is.
Yeah, the reports.
Thank you.
Tarek, you're next, but I cannot correctly pronounce your last name, so I'll leave that up to you.
That was Tarek. Yes, you got it right. Good evening, Mayor, Board of Trustees. My name is Tarek, I live at 315 Forsythia Drive with my wife, Tracy. I'm here tonight to voice my concern as well about the proposed, proposing the removal of the berms. We moved to the neighborhood about two and a half years ago, and it's just, to be honest, it's devastating to see that berm go. I can't not imagine for the Lyons' that spent 50 years and connected to that space. The berm for us was as new to the community, was part of us connecting with the neighbors. We saw a lot of neighbors walking their dogs to those, to the berms, we got to know them. Even though we're at the end of the road, that was, you know, something that we cherish, something that connects us to the community. The fact that removing that berm and placing literally a home next to it, it just will put us in isolation, we're going to be the home at the end of the road that no one will walk to. So this is, it's been stressful, to be honest with you, this whole process for almost two months, dealing with this, it's been, to say the least, stressful, I'll just repeat that. The plan of removing the berms and Pulte being a company that comes with the plan, put it in place and leave, that's their business, but as part of the community, you're part of the community, you should look out for the people that live here. We're going to be here, Pulte will come, destroy the berm, build houses, and leave to the next project. We're going to be the one living around that neighborhood, we're going to be the one that you're going to see us another time, you're going to be the people that you will meet us. I'm here to voice my concern, and I also want to make sure that you hear my concern and hear our concern, because you're part of our community, and we would appreciate that you look out for us. And thank you.
Thank you for your comments, and I'm sorry I mispronounced your name.
No, you're good.
Any other public comment?
Your Honor, I don't know if you want to just summarize that at the next board meeting, we will be getting the report and recommendation from the Plan Commission on this particular issue.
So that would be on the 20th, where we presumably will get the recommendation that the Plan Commission and the Board will consider it. The Board can accept it, reject it, accept it with modifications, accept it with conditions, et cetera, but it will work our way, it will work its way to our agenda on the 20th. You are more than welcome to come to that meeting again, and voice your concerns, one minute, I see you, John, you're more than welcome to continue to express by email or your written comments about this project as well. John?
Will there be a chance to question and answer, because in the Planning Commission, the five of us got up, sat down, they called for a vote, and now we're sitting here, no acknowledgment. Will that be more or less the case?
So the board meeting's going to be different than the Plan Commission meeting. The Plan Commission was a public hearing where the public is, the petitioner gives its presentation, the public is given an opportunity to voice its concerns, objections, support, et cetera, and questions can be asked, so there's more of a give and take of the petitioner, in particular at the public hearing. If there are questions from the public on the 20th, those questions will be directed to us, and then we'll take them, you know, as they come, but they will not be in the form of cross-examination of Pulte, as would have been the case during the public hearing.
But the Board can then ask questions of the petitioner, you know?
Yeah. If we choose to do so, yes. Okay?
I have a question. Will the petitioner get copies of the information that was provided to us today, so they're aware of?
I would encourage you to send Pulte your studies, just like you got theirs, they should see yours and be prepared to answer those questions. So that's up to you, but they won't be able, they won't be, say, challenged or have an opportunity to answer the questions if you don't send them your appraisal report or your engineering study in advance, whatever you got, if you've sent it to them, great, if you haven't, I would encourage you to do so.
The response is, anything that we get, we want to share with all parties.
Yes.
So if it's presented to the Village Staff or the Village Board in advance of the meeting, we want to share that with all parties, to the extent that we can-
Right, in the spirit of fairness.
-recognizing the deadlines that come in with a Monday meeting and a Thursday distribution, all those kind of things, and as the group, sometimes we'll just present information to you at the dais if we get it over the weekend, so to answer a question, we want to try and give all that information that's submitted to you as trustees to the affected parties involved. That's the intention.
So you can submit to us directly?
One other quick thing, will the trustees entirely the villages visit the site, difficult as that would happen?
As you know, I'm familiar with the site.
Yes, I should have been there.
And the trustees can go there, we're not all going to go there at the same time, because then we have Open Meetings Act issues, and you got to publish a meeting, but anyone who wants to walk there, go.
Yeah, I've been there.
Okay. All right, any other public comments, any other questions? Thank you guys for coming to tonight's meeting. Reports, item 2451, consideration, oh, sorry, consideration and action on the Plan Commission's recommendation on the request for a planned unit development and approval of a preliminary development plan, with necessary exceptions for the redevelopment of the rear 10.79 acres of Deerbrook Shopping Center with multifamily residential transit-oriented development, and, I'm sorry, by Gateway Fairview Inc. and Continental 744 Fund LLC.
Plan Commission held a public hearing on March 28th, 2024, to consider a request for a preliminary development plan with exceptions to allow the redevelopment of the rear 10-plus acres of Deerbrook Shopping Center into a multifamily residential rental apartment development of 254 units. The residential development will include 25 affordable units in compliance with the village's affordable housing ordinance. Following this consideration, the Plan Commission voted four to zero to recommend approval. Plan Commission Chair Bromberg is with us tonight, is able to answer questions from the Board, and we would suggest that the petitioner be provided an opportunity to provide a summary review of their proposal, and I think they are prepared to do so tonight.
And I know the petitioner and her team are here. Come on up.
I'm Jen Patton, Development Director with Continental Properties. I also have Megan Weiss and Doug Shannon with Gary Weber and Associates, our landscape architect, Mark Skakow from SEMCON, our civil engineer, and Michael Worthman from Cloa, our traffic consultant. They can answer any questions in their areas of expertise. I think I'd like to start with just a brief overview of who Continental is, who are, what our resident demographic looks like, and then some specifics about the project, and then open it up for questions. So Continental, we were founded in 1979, we are headquartered out of Menominee Falls, Wisconsin. We have 125 developed communities, multifamily communities nationwide. We are a national multifamily retail and hospitality developer, and our multifamily projects stretch across 19 states. One of the things that does set us aside from our competitors, we own, operate, and manage all of our own properties, so we do not sell out to third-party management companies. Like I had mentioned, we have a national footprint, we have eight stabilized properties in Illinois alone, McHenry, Crystal Lake, South Elgin, St. Charles, North Aurora, Romeo Ville, Bowling Brook, and Oswego. We also have a project under construction right now, 340 units in Lockport, we have three more in various phases of development, also in Mundeline, another in South Elgin and Aurora. As I had mentioned, our team has quite extensive data on not only what our demographic looks like for our residents by age, by income, also by school-age children, which I know is always a very large topic for municipalities and for our residents themselves. So this slide, the top line is our national portfolio across the country. So as you can see, about 50% of our residents are 20 to 34 years of age, young professionals, about 20% is in that 35 to 49, and then we have seen an increasing number and percentage of our empty nesters. Underneath that is strictly our Illinois projects, so very similar across the board in Illinois as well. This specific community being a TOD and its proximity to the metro station, we anticipate that those 20 to 34-year-olds, that percentage is highly likely going to be higher in this School-age children, so school-age children defined by kids who are 5 to 18, so the number of kids spread from elementary school, middle school, junior high, to high school. This slide, very similar to the last slide, the top line is our national portfolio, so you can see about 17.1 school-age children, again, 5 to 18, per 100 units. Illinois is slightly less than that, it's 16.4. So for example, this community, it tipped 254 units, doing the math, if we based it on the Illinois averages, would be about 40 to 45 kids. Again, because of the proximity to metro, we anticipate that being likely less due to the young professionals that'll be taking the train into the city in that 20 to 34-year-old age group. I know we're all pretty familiar with the site location, but this is the 10.79 acres located directly behind the Deerbrook Shopping Center. We are abutting the interstate spur and the metro connection, or the metro line, which I will talk a little bit more about in terms of our intent to provide a metro pathway connection to our site. Brief overview of the site plan consists of eight three-story buildings, seven of the buildings are 32 units, three-story, and then one is 30 units, three-story. We have a 43 to 4400 square foot clubhouse with resort-style pool, two pet parks, and then various green space and open space am- two pet parks, and then various green space and open space amenities throughout the site. Our team has worked countless hours on massaging this plan, not only to increase the open space as much as possible. We did increase it up to 35%, really giving some of those green and open spaces more purposeful use for the residents. We also have purposefully aligned the buildings in a manner that allows for the most optimal natural light, so exposures to the sun. Main access from the site, or main entrance, will be off of the Waukegan entrance, and then we also have a secondary access point at the northwest corner to Lake Cook Road, which is also where that metro connection will be located. Parking breakdowns. So required for this site per ordinance is 443 stalls. We are really close. We are asking for an exception on the parking counts. Overall, onsite parking, including our attached, detached apron stalls, we're at 401. We are fine, in the process of finalizing our REA with Gateway to include the 35 angled stalls in the entry drive, bringing us up to 436, which is still not counting the tandem stalls in our garages for the garages that are attached to our three-story buildings that do have a double load. We don't, we don't count those in the overall parking counts. So we are seven less than the required at a parking ratio of 1.7. 1.7, and, and Michael can come up with any parking questions, is significantly less than a typical TOD project in nature, which are usually in the 1.3, 1.4. Community amenities, again, resort-style pool outside of our clubhouse. We have a Click Cafe and demonstration-style kitchen in our clubhouse, which offers our residents not only an area where they can come together as a community for events and planned events, but also rent that space out for their own private parties as well. And then we have a 24-hour fitness center. Other amenities, we have two pet playgrounds with agility equipment, our car care center. It's not a full-service car wash or an oil change. It's just somewhere where our residents can go vacuum out their cars, clean their cars, and wash their dogs after they've played outside in the pet parks, and then also outdoor seating areas. One of the things we did add to the plan as we worked through the ARC, unlike some of our other communities, bocce ball courts. We also have a multi-use sport court for pickleball and other activities in addition to all of the other standard amenities that we provide throughout the community. As, as mentioned, we do plan to comply with the affordable housing ordinance, which will offer 25 of our units to be offered as affordable. And then those are, those are placed and scattered so that they are not all in one location on the site. They're, they're scattered throughout. Interior design, we've got our square footage is off to the right. The typical breakdown for our units, studio, one-bedroom, two-bedroom, and three-bedroom. The typical breakdown is 10% studios, 40% one, 40% twos, and 10% threes. All of our units do have in-unit washers and dryers, granite countertops, energy-efficient appliances, again, with the enhanced natural light. And then all of them have a patio on the first level and private balconies on the second and third level. These are some elevations of the clubhouse. Brick veneer, cementitious hardyboard siding. This is the 32-unit, three-story. There's nine attached garages on these three stories. So three of the garages have direct access to the units themselves. Four of them have access to the common stairwell. And then two of them are floaters for anyone who may want a garage that, that's needed for extra storage or not necessarily attached to a specific unit. These are the side elevations. There's a Scheme A and a Scheme B for color schemes. I did bring sample boards for you to, to see the colors and the paint selections here. And then this is the Scheme B of that 32-unit. Side elevations. And then this is the 30-unit. The 30-unit does not have any attached garages on, on this building specifically. Accessory buildings, we have two eight, eight-car detached garages for rent, six, two six-car garages. And then we have our maintenance building, Car Care Center, where we store maintenance equipment and things of that nature. And then that's the trash enclosure and compactor on the top right there. Signage was a big topic of conversation with the ARC. We did make several changes to the signage. We have a main monument sign at the entry off of Waukegan that's single-sided, illuminated at night. And then a secondary, single-sided monument sign at the Lake Cook entrance. The picture at the north, or on the, I'm sorry, on the top right there is a picture of our monument sign at the Springs at St. Charles prior to the landscaping going in. The next few slides are 3D photorist, photorealistic renderings. Gary Weber and Associates did a great job on these. These are actual renderings of what the landscaping will be. All of the plantings are what is planned per the landscape plan. So this view is the clubhouse with the bocce ball courts and the multi-use sport court with the pool in the background. Another view of the bocce ball and sport court. This is our gas fire pit with some bistro lighting and then the bocce ball behind that. A night shot. Some other areas where we have benches. We do include bike racks here. And then this area is that pod of four buildings in the northwest corner with a pergola with additional seating, grilling area, and just nice open courtyard for the residents for those four buildings. Gary Weber provided a landscaped rendering of the site plan. Native plantings. I know we have quite a bit of native plantings here, and any specific questions on those, I'm sure they'd be happy to answer. But these are just some of the native plantings that were incorporated into the plan. And then again, some of the outdoor amenities. In conclusion, I just, I want to thank you all for having us here. It's been a pleasure working with the staff and, and the ARC and Plan Commission. We really do, we're, hope that we can get this across the finish line. We, if all goes well and we receive all approvals, we intend to close in October of this year. We immediately start, we immediately break ground upon closing or right after closing. So the clubhouse would be, we'd go through site work. Clubhouse is about 10 months, and then each building is sequenced two to three weeks to complete after the clubhouse. So approximately about an 18-month, give or take, construction schedule, depending on weather conditions. We are working right now with the village. I know the village is working with Metro on the annexation agreement for the metro connection that I had mentioned. So our, our site would have that metro connection to the platform, which we're already working with our consultants on for the design. And then Continental, similar to the REVA plan, would construct and maintain that pathway in an agreement with the village. That's all I have. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Yeah, I describe, I'm self-described, I'm self-described transit trustee, and I'm pleased to see the connection to Metro, which I'm sure will be very well-considered and well-valued in terms of the people who live there. But I would suggest that somewhere along the line, you also talk to PACE, which also serves the station and which will serve people going to Northbrook Court if their, if Northbrook Court remains there, or the new development area we're talking about on Lake Cook Road, or other places along that Metro doesn't get to, and will be a very, very valuable amenity to the people who live here. So I think it's probably a good idea to include that in some of the advertisements and some of the planning. I know it's a little bit awkward because you have to go across the tracks, and PACE comes in from the east and then around the back and then goes out the same way. But it, it would be of value to your potential residents, especially to the younger school-aged kids who might want to work at some of those places, or maybe a housewife who wants to do a little bit of shopping, but the car is someplace else.
Thank you.
I have a question.
I noticed you, excuse me, mentioned when you were talking about your signage, the Lake Cook entrance sign. And one of the challenges of the site as we've dealt with these Deerbrook and Deer Park Plaza and this particular site over the years has been access between the sites. And I'm wondering if you could describe a little bit more to us what the agreement is and your vision is in terms of getting people in there from Lake Cook Road along the private drive that goes through Deerfield Park Plaza?
Sure, I'm going to pull the site plan back up.
It's at that northwest corner.
Yep.
And as I understood it, reading the packet, it said it will be gated?
Right, so the community is gated. We're working right now on an REA with, with Gateway on the easement for, for access from Waukegan and that main entry. We also are working with them on access to the pylon signs so that we can have a panel on those pylon signs for visibility from both Waukegan and from Lake Cook. We have had some conversations with Mosaic from the plaza on how we can work with them to, because, because we know we have the cross-access that we're working with. We're still working with them on that. The access, for the cross-access is probably going to be up where we have this lift station here. So you would come down from Lake Cook, and then we would come across to this access point here to get out to Waukegan. Those details are still being worked out with what, with Mosaic and with the team. And obviously, we'll be working with village staff on that as well to make sure we're not causing any traffic issues through that shopping center.
So there won't be an entry at the northwest corner into the development?
There will be for the residents. It'll be gated, though.
Gated in what sense?
Card access?
Card access, key fob.
For residents?
For residents.
And, and you're, if you remember, the, the parking lot configuration behind the SAC Center allows people to, they can connect to Deerbrook. They don't need to go into the, to get east-west. There's a east-west connection with Deerbrook already on the north side of this property line, if you will.
But it's complicated.
You gotta know what you're doing. There's no doubt about it.
It's complicated.
So does that then kind of beg for more wayfair signage? Is that something you guys can accommodate? Because it's kind of tricky, maybe provide some additional signage?
Directional signage?
So I think that partly that's working with Mosaic, right?
Yes.
Because the signage leading there, and then she talked about the pylon sign.
Yes.
But the signage leading, wayfinding, or however we want to describe it, directional signage, for residents only, kind of, I don't know how you, let, let the experts figure that out.
Sure.
But at the north end with the connection of Deerbrook and the mall behind, we have multiple instances of enforcement issues in terms of the one-way.
Right.
So it does certainly beg the question as to how we label this to get at least a fighting chance to have people do what we want them to.
So when you come back for final, some of the things that I think you might want to button up would be those easements, those reciprocal agreements, signage, the access that you just talked about with us?
And then I have a question on what's the breakdown of the affordable units? I know you have three or four different types of units, so how do those break down in the different types?
Sure, so they're spread around the site, so they're not all in one building. But there is, there's two studios, 11 one-bedrooms, 11 two-bedrooms, and then one three-bedroom, totaling 25.
Does that break down, is it kind of a percentage of the way they break down overall?
Exactly, exactly.
I think that's what our ordinance requires.
Exactly. It has to reflect the general population.
What about EV stations?
So that has been a very hot topic in our, in our office.
You bet.
So that legislation, as you all know, just passed. We are working with our contractors, with our EV consultants on what that looks like. With multifamily rental, every stall must be EV-capable. So we will be in compliance. It's just a matter of what that looks like and how we, you know, how that looks in terms of running the conduit. Fortunately here, we have a lot of attached and detached garages. Those are a little bit easier to deal with than the surface parking stalls. But we will be complying with the state legislation. I know the state is relying on the municipalities to enforce that. And, you know, there's, there's, I know there's some developers out there talking about, well, can we get creative? And do we have to do it all? We're worried that we won't even get a lender to provide our construction loan if we're not meeting all federal regulations. So we are working through that. We've got takeoffs going on right now for our EV chargers here.
Something else to put on your list for final?
Correct. Right.
And my guess is that's probably, depending on the, the layout of that specific configuration, that can be $1,000 to $3,000 per unit, depending on where it is. So it's not, it's not a huge number, but it's also, it's, it's a number. It's a real number.
Yeah, right now it's penciling around three, actually, $3,000 to $4,000 per unit. Yeah.
Wow, and so you would have to provide these also on the additional slant spaces on the entry drive coming in?
So we're looking at that with our legal team. We're looking at, possibly looking at those as, even though they'd be able to be used for the community.
They're public.
Yeah, they're public. So we're, we're still working on that with our REA and trying to figure out, you know, what, we're all still just trying to figure out, like, the interpretation of this legislation to make sure that we're in compliance. So because it's so new, we're working through that. But we will meet the intent of the legislation and provide the EV here.
Good luck.
Just run the conduit, right?
It has to be in, yep.
Wow.
Jane, Larry, anything?
I applaud you for a clever way of trying to tuck housing into this extremely challenging footprint.
Thank you.
I'm thrilled to see it.
This is the second go-round we've had on this site, as you know. And it's such a unique space with it being bound by the, the, certainly has transit, by the highway and the railroad, and then the shopping. I mean, the potential's there, but it, it took some creative thinking, and, and I do applaud you for that.
Thank you.
Liz, Al, anything? Al? Jen, you probably remember Al, he's chairman of our Plan Commission, Al Bromberg.
Just one quick comment. I wanted you to know that Sheldon Blitstein from Mosaic did attend the Plan Commission meeting. He supports this development as it would provide a lot of potential customers to his tenants. His only concern was if cars would come and park in his lot all day and access the train. But they won't be able to do that because the access from this development to the train will require the key fob, the same key fob to get from the development to the train or from the train back through the development. So that would make it unlikely that anybody would, that doesn't live there would try to access from there and avoid paying for the metro lot.
They might try it, but only once, when they realize they can't get through, right?
Yeah.
Well, and my observations are you're getting about 35 to 40% train parking, commuter lot parking now. People are still not using the train on a regular basis. But that doesn't mean it's not, it couldn't be a problem in the future if, if the world goes great, right? But that, that's part of that enforcement mechanism.
I mean, if you had somebody dropping their kid at the childcare center and thinking, I'll just leave my car here and go up to the train, but they won't be able to get through, so.
Interesting, okay.
Thanks, Matt.
Thank you. So the agreement with Metro to create this entrance to the station is something that the village has to?
Yep, as part of our annexation agreement. Andrew, I don't know if you want to speak to that? But yeah, so annexation agreement, an enforcement agreement. Correct, so staff will bring on June 3, I think that's the Monday, first meeting in June, we will have a public hearing at this meeting to consider the annexation for a portion of the railroad to be incorporated into the Village of Deerfield. Metro will only enter an agreement with the government, so with us. And then we will enter into a separate agreement with Continental for the maintenance of that pedestrian pathway. Ben is working on that actively, and we're putting, we have the notices going out to the paper. is working on that actively, and we're putting, we have notices going out to the paper to have that public hearing. Ben, I don't know if you have anything else in detail to add?
It's a little wonky, but it's three separate agreements. There's the annexation agreement because Metra won't allow us to annex without it. There will be a second agreement, which is between us and Metra regarding obligations for the care of this walkway, the construction and so forth, and then a third agreement, which will be between us and Continental to fulfill our obligations in terms of the maintenance of the walkway, the pathway. So it'll be three agreements.
Were maintained in the walkway?
Continental will. It's the plan, you know, and that would be technically, though, up to this board to decide, but that was the idea, that it would be a condition of the development, that they would enter into a maintenance agreement with us to take on our obligations that we have to Metra to maintain.
Got it.
And in terms of maintenance, not to totally muddy the waters here, but I, as you know, at home, I have a Metro person.
Had.
Who has brought up the fact that when people access the train station this way, they will be on the opposite side of the tracks from the southbound, and they will have to cross.
Yep.
Yes.
And in terms of maintenance of the property, I understand that we have to keep the walkway so people don't fall down, but some, I'm just a little concerned that there's going to be some kind of liability, safety liability, for people, exactly, crossing the tracks, because it will be a reality.
It's a thing that's not there now. I mean, people do walk around it, but they don't, there's not an official crossing. So we all want that to be safe. We all want that to be cared for.
Is that an ICC issue?
So there's regulations that talk about rail crossings, so it has to meet certain standards. So that's one. And I want to, and there's kind of two different issues. So there's the crossing on the platform itself, which where people will cross, and, you know, and that is marked right now by Metra, and that's really their liability, and there's tort immunity and so forth that they have. So what's, you know, then if somebody, I guess, separate from that will be what's on the property that we're obligated to maintain, which, I don't know, Andrew, if you can speak to it, but it does not include a crossing itself of the tracks.
Not on the, not, it won't be on the portion that we need to maintain.
Right. So the portion that we're responsible for, which Continental will be agreeing to maintain, is more of a sidewalk and
Adjacent to the track.
Adjacent and leading up to the platform.
And there will be some clarity. All I'm asking for is there will be some clarity that, you know, the subsequent safety of people, God forbid, anyone should be hurt, but it is not the village's responsibility or their responsibility. This is a Metro responsibility.
That's consistent with railroad practice.
Exactly. For the safety of their riders.
All this will be bundled up in an annexation agreement?
So there'll be the annexation agreement, then there'll be a separate agreement between us and Metra that governs the construction and maintenance of the pathway, and there'll be another agreement between us and Continental that deals with their obligations to maintain the pathway. So it's three agreements, but we will make sure that, you know, the village is protected the best we can.
Is there going to be a pedestrian gate for the crossing? Is that?
Probably not, because there isn't at the Deerfield Station, but I would recommend somewhere along the line that an alarm, a bell, or something, that there's an approaching train would be a very advantageous measure to put in there.
This has to comply with ICC regulations.
Exactly, and that comes from Metra.
Right.
But the fact that we don't have it in the Deerfield Station gives me some indication that maybe they're not going to put it in, and I think it's a good thing to put in.
I just don't want to be liable if they don't.
Not a gate, a bell.
Well, we can't.
There's a new standard now.
So we're going to get, we're going to have those standards and obligations imposed upon us by Metra and then turn, pass those on to Continental.
Yep. So the annexation agreement is drafted. It'll be here June 3. As part of, we have to have a public hearing for that. Those notices are being published right now. The agreement between the Village of Deerfield and Metra, we already have drafted. That previously existed as exhibit to the development agreement for the REVA development, so that agreement was written, is still written. We're just giving everyone one more look at it, but it's really and substantially that form. It is completed. And then that final agreement between the village and Continental, putting the maintenance obligation onto them, we will draft and we'll bring that back as part of the final development agreement and final approval. So that one you won't see for a while.
Maintenance and liability.
Correct. Yep. So annexation first, but the good news is the Metra agreement, the village agreement, has already, you know, been completed substantially that form because it was done in anticipation of REVA breaking ground, which of course didn't happen. So we'll be back with more on that topic.
Fun.
Lots of stuff. Any other questions, or Jen, or her team? All right. Do I have a motion to approve the Plan Commission's recommendation and to direct the village attorney to prepare an ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
And this is for preliminary development plan. Roll call, please.
Trustee Jacoby?
Yes.
Trustee Mets Childers?
Yes.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Yes.
Trustee Benton?
Yes.
Trustee Berg?
Yes.
Trustee Goldstone?
Yes.
Motion passes.
So Mayor, just to note that the ordinances won't be drafted yet. It'll go back to the Plan Commission for final approval before it comes back here for one more. Then the board would have the opportunity to accept the final development plan. After that, we'll draft the ordinances.
The ordinances are presented. Yes. Report and recommendation acceptance, and then?
Yes. Thank you. Nothing on our consent agenda, no old?
I think you got a vote. Did you take, did you get the roll call?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry. Sorry.
Nothing on our consent agenda, no old business, no new business. There are a couple items for discussion by the mayor and board of trustees. I have a few, and then trustees have any. Larry and I were at the Shake Shack ribbon cutting a week or so ago. That's fun, and looks like they're doing great. We did not get a shake. I didn't, actually, but I don't know.
Disappointed.
I didn't.
Didn't? Well, okay. Well, we'll have to go back and get that shake. But congratulations to Shake Shack for their opening.
And an extra note, they were having a friends and family invitation for Half-Fries the night before, which got canceled because they had electrical problems. So we went on the grand opening day, my wife and I and neighbors, and it was amazing. For every two adults, I think there were six kids in the car, poor kids running around, and everybody was enjoying the food.
Good. I had the pleasure of helping plant a tree at South Park a week or so ago with, I think it was a four and five-year-old class. It was really cute. They're wonderful. You may remember that we reached out to Commissioner Scott Britton to let him know what's going on on the south side of Lake Cook and to also talk to him about the needed improvements at Wilmont and Lake Cook. And we were informed that those improvements might start in the fall to look at that intersection, and we're hoping that it's done the way it should be done.
Again, maintenance. We're not talking about expanding capacity. We're just talking about fixing what's there so that it's well-marked and the pavement is secure. It's not expanding turn lanes or anything.
Right. No, just maintenance. Yeah. It's a mess. Coffee with the cop on May 10 from 8:00 to 11:00 at the downtown Starbucks. We have our first food truck Wednesday, which is next Wednesday, May 15, not this Wednesday, but May 15 from 4:30 to 8:00, and for at least this first time, it will be at Brickyards because of the construction that's due. There is what I call a dementia workshop that's being offered, I believe it's 1:00 to 3:00 through the township here on May 16. On May 17 will be cop on a rooftop, and on May 17 at Dunkin' Donuts. I don't have the time for that, David. Do you know?
It's all day.
It's all day?
Like 6:00 to 5:00 noon, 5:00 to 1:00?
Early morning, early morning.
Early morning to early afternoon. And then on the 18th, so we got something, the 15th, the 16th, the 17th, and now on the 18th, the Public Works Open House, Saturday, May 18 at 465 Elm Street from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. And then on Sunday, the 19th, is, no.
The 12th.
Sorry. This Sunday, not a week from Sunday, is Mother's Day on the 12th. So go back to the beginning of the calendar. Mother's Day is May 12. Thank you all for reminding me. Happy Mother's Day to all the mothers in the room. That's all I got.
I just want to recognize the passing of our longtime village greeter, Nadine Menaker. Nadine passed within the last two weeks, served as like the initial contact for village for new residents, I'm going to say, David, for 20, maybe 30 years. She was here when I was here in the 80s, so long-time service.
I just honored her maybe about a week.
We did. We did. So she passed, so I just wanted to recognize and thank her for her service.
A nice lady.
I would now entertain a motion to go into closed session pursuant to 5 ILC S.120/2C11. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Roll call.
Mets Childers?
Yes.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Yes.
Trustee Benton?
Yes.
Trustee Berg?
Yes.
Trustee Goldstone?
Yes.
And Trustee Jacoby?
Yes.
Motion passes.